All right, everybody, I'd like to open up the Canton Township Board of Trustees' regular board meeting on April 8th, 2025 at 6:36 PM. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's session will not be online because we cannot get the Zoom to work with the cameras. Clerk Seegrist, can you please take roll call?
Ken, one, one moment. Let's go with Supervisor Anne Marie Graham-Hudak.
Good evening.
All right. Let the record reflect that Clerk Michael Seegrist is present, voting, and speaking. Diane Slavens, Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
All right. It looks as though Trustee Kate Borninski is absent, and Trustee Amara Ansari is absent. Trustee Tanya Ganguly.
Good evening.
Present, and Trustee Summer Foster.
Good evening.
Also present.
Thank you. So tonight, we're going to start with the master plan discussion led by Erin. I believe it's already gone to the Planning Commission, so you kind of give us a summary of that, and then some of the questions and statements you saw, and then the board can ask questions.
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So we're here to discuss the master plan update, and just for clarification, the timeline for adoption, we are at 10.5. So the Planning Commission has, we've had public comments that has gone out for 63 days. We've received all those comments. The Planning Commission heard the comments. We've made some minor modifications to the text, providing some clarification and some explanation, particularly to public transit and the nodes, which I'll get into in a moment, and they set the public hearing at last night's meeting. So this is really an explanation on what we've done, what the Planning Commission heard, and what direction we're going in. So as I mentioned, the planning commission, or the master plan was open for public comment for the required 63 days, January 15th through March 19th. We had over 50 comments received. The plan was downloaded over 17,000 times, sorry, 1,700 times by over 700 users. So we had a lot of, you know, great jobs, we like it, and then some people didn't like a lot of the effort or a lot of the ideas that we had, and they wanted us to reconsider. So some of the common themes were focused on the residential areas, Cherry Hill Village, the environment, commercial uses, the pedestrian connections, as well as public transit, conditions of the roads, neighborhood nodes in particular. There was a lot of comments received about the potential development at Ford Road and Beck, and then we had a lot of miscellaneous comments. You know, there were some errors in relation to references to tables, or this didn't quite line up right, the formatting was a little off, some of the pictures were a little pixelated and hard to read. So some of those miscellaneous things we'll fix very easily. So on March 24th, the Planning Commission reviewed all of the comments, and we recommended the following. No changes related to the residential, Cherry Hill Village, the environment, commercial uses, and roads, but we did recommend to take a look at public transit, specifically highlighting the public transit regional assessment that we're talking about doing here, condensing the classification of the nodes from parcel and intersection nodes to strictly neighborhood nodes. So we do away with the parcel specific, the intersection, and it's just considered a node. Include examples of nodes from other communities. That way, people can see a real-life example on how things were previously and how they've been developed. Highlight suitable node locations, and then provide a site analysis for each of the 20 nodes, and again, some miscellaneous edits for pictures, word choice, explanations, clarification, et cetera. So in relation to the public transit, we had comments related to enhancing sidewalk connections, intra-community transit, smart connections, pedestrian safety, microtransit, things of that nature. So what we wanted to do was provide some focus on the public transit connections for all of Canton residents, so focus on intra-community, excuse me, transit around hubs within the community itself, and also look at ways to expand either Nankin, connect to Smart. Given the legislation that has come down and the upcoming millage vote in 2026, Canton is proposing a regional public transit assist assessment, which we work with adjacent community members, and looking at creating a full public transit and multimodal transportation plan. So a lot of those things were already in the plan, I mean, not the legislation and not the vote, because we didn't know that at the time, but a lot of these things were already in the plan. We just enhanced the language and then included some of the actions that Canton is currently is going to be undertaking, one of which is the regional public transit assessment, partnering with CWW, looking at ways that we can really provide transit for our community members and also for the, be a partner in the region itself. Are there any questions on public transit before I move on? Or I can wait till the end? Okay. And then we get into neighborhood nodes. As I mentioned, there was some confusion related to parcel versus intersection nodes and what, why they're different, why they, why they're expressed differently in the maps. There was risk of potential vacant strip malls continuing on into Ford Road, increase in the traffic and the reduction of pedestrian safety, bike lanes into neighborhoods, and there was a lot of discussion about required infrastructure that would be needed for all the nodes. So in the text, we propose the following. We're going to give a couple examples of these nodes and where they have worked in other communities in Michigan. We've updated the future land use map to remove the parcel nodes, intersection nodes, and focus just on the intersection, just on neighborhood nodes, so there's not a different classification between, between the two. And then we've conducted a preliminary node site analysis. So this looks at each one of the 20 nodes that we've identified on the future land use map, and looks at where the mixed-use development could be suitable, what can, what site or building design considerations need to be implemented, and what are the required infrastructure elements that we can see in this stage. This is not a comprehensive, all-encompassing list, this is just a starting point, so that way when we start meeting with developers and they have a particular area, we can say, these are the things that we know offhand that need to be addressed, whether it's environmental, traffic, sidewalk connections, those types of things. But again, it's not an exhaustive list, and it, all these things will be identified and, and looked at in more detail as they go through the PDD site plan approval process. So the first element is the node examples. So we discussed this with the Planning Commission at length previously, and they wanted to see, and we provided examples of a development of a vacant site, which we have here and identified nodes in our community, and also the redevelopment of an existing commercial area. So we provided them examples of Novi, Michigan, and Royal Oak. So this is Novi, the northwest corner of Grand River and Meadow Brook. The white, big white building is soccer zone, total sock or something like that. It's an indoor recreation facility that was built prior to 2000, and there's some commercial there. But on the northwest corner, as you can see, in 2023, they had built a single-story, multi-tenant commercial with, and on the same property, they had a single-family attached residential units behind it. So they're all connected, there's green space there, there's an interconnected, not only vehicular routes, but also their sidewalk connections all the way around through this. So a person could live in the townhomes, go to the salon or to a restaurant in the strip mall, and then take their kids over to the total soccer. So it's a, it's an area where there is meant to be connections. Second one is Royal Oak. This is at the southwest corner of 13 Mile and Woodward. This is a single-story, multi-tenant strip mall that was built in the 50s, sometime in the 50s. So in 2015, this is what it looked like, again, huge expansive area of parking that's being underutilized. You can't tell from this, but the condition of the single-story strip mall was not in the best shape, so there was a lot of vacancies. There's no landscaping to speak of, so it's not a very pretty, pretty area. Speaking of, on the west side here, you'll see that little, there's a service drive there, that's Beaumont Hospital, Royal Oak Beaumont Hospital. So it's right, it's in a prime location, right there at that corner, and it's just being underutilized. So single developer came in and built this, the big, the big building there is a mire, a very upscale mire. There is single-story commercial, and then this building here that's being built is a first-floor, or first-floor commercial, and then second, third floors are Hyatt and long-term stay for people who have family members in the hospital system. So, and then they're all, it's all connected through, through vehicular paths and also sidewalks. So these are two examples of how this could work. You know, they're, they vary in size, they vary in use, they vary in, in all different kinds of elements, but they also include a lot of green space, there's trees, there's sidewalk areas, there's bicyclists there. So they're, they're really active spaces. Additionally, when we looked at the neighborhood nodes, we, we looked at, okay, we have an intersection, what are the suitable locations? Not all four corners should be a node, right? Not all four corners should be a mixed use. So what are the suitable locations within that node area? What are the existing conditions that we need to pay attention to? And what are any site analysis that we can glean from the very beginning? So this is at the southeast corner of Joy Road in Napier. So this example is a vacant property. It's already zoned commercial, it's already been future land use planned for commercial, but nothing has developed here for any number of reasons. But you have, we're bound by Plymouth Township, Salem Township, Superior Township. So when we look at this type of area, what we would want here is something that only connects to the adjacent residential area to, to the east, but also to the communities to the northwest and northwest, as appropriate. When we look at this, we look at the permitted uses, and in the text, there's a table that shows each one of these, and it's all very, a lot of the, the material is repeated because a lot of these conditions are the same. We don't, the permitted uses are all going to be the same. We want retail, we want office, restaurants. What we don't want, gas stations. We don't want car washes. We don't want auto-centric drive-through restaurants, repair facilities, none of those. So a lot of those, that text is going to be the same. The site and building design, we want them situated at the major roadways. We want them close to it. We don't want expansive parking right up at the intersections. Connections to nearby adjacent neighborhoods or communities, as, as locations dictate. Increase the parking landscaping and foundation. We want to make sure that there's, that we increase the tree, urban tree canopy here in the community, and that's one way of doing it by these mixed use. Public art, we want to incorporate green infrastructure, bicycle connections, all of these things are going to be looked at during the site and building design component. And then finally, we look at the infrastructure. So this is one of the big ones that we had concerns over these node developments. We want to make sure that roadway and traffic improvements are considered at the forefront, based on the traffic impact study that any developer would be required to provide. Create pedestrian crossings, ADA sidewalks that connect to adjacent communities, connections to a public transit when that's available. We want those things to be incorporated into the development from the get-go. We want the developers to know that these are the elements that if you want a commercial, residential, mixed-use area in our community, you have to bring your A-game, right? Stormwater management that exceeds Wayne County, we all know that there's a lot of water, stormwater issues here in Canton, so how can we make that better? How can we mitigate that with new development and that intersection improvements? And this, as I mentioned, this is not an exhaustive list. These are just the highlighted examples that we know are issues and concerns that need to be addressed prior to and concurrent with development. This is the intersection that has caused a lot of, a lot of feedback, and we've talked about this one before. So it's the same, same example and same kind of criteria. We looked at this and saw, okay, the southeast and southwest corners highlighted in the pink, those would be the areas that are suitable for development, right? The northeast, we have the historic building, we're not touching it. We have the, the bridge and the creek, we're not touching those. Northwest, it's, you know, same thing with the creek, and it's all residential there. So those areas we didn't feel would be suitable for even putting it on the map for potential development. But the southeast, southwest, those might be prime opportunities. Now, by identifying this as a node and including this in the text, this does not preclude someone from coming in, because these are zoned, or yeah, zoned and future land use map underneath as residential. So just because we have the node there doesn't mean that the only thing that can go there is the mixed-use node. If someone were to purchase the property and say they wanted to build a single-family detached subdivision with 600 units, which is ballpark, you know, if it complies with the future land use map, they can do that. This is just if they wanted to do, if someone came and said, we really want commercial on the southwest corner of Ford. How can we get that? Well, you can't do a straight rezoning because we don't support it, but you could do a mixed use. You could do a commercial on the first, first floor, second-story office, residential, or something in the back. That's how you can get that commercial component, but you have to do these things that we want. Does that make sense? But it doesn't preclude, it doesn't stop a developer from doing the straight residential that the underlying future land use classification or the zoning map allows. Yeah.
Okay, so the existence of a node does not invalidate or vacate the underlying zoning?
Correct. Right. That's why we got rid of the parcels, the parcel node identification, and we're just keeping it as kind of the intersection node, the neighborhood node there. So it could go there, but it doesn't stop the underlying future land use classification from existing.
So the vehicle for these nodes, is that going to be through like a PDD then?
Yes. And all of this will be included and codified when the zoning district has been written.
Okay. And is there an opportunity to lower the minimum parking requirement inside of these nodes through the PDD?
Yep. So with, through the PDD and through the Planning Commission process, the Planning Commission has the authority to modify a parking requirement, and so those would be things that we would look at, especially because we want these to be more pedestrian-oriented and not, you know, auto-centric.
That's a great way to potentially alleviate the fears people have of this notion that we would be recreating what currently exists in other parts of the township in these specific areas. Rise traffic if there was no place to put your car.
So you talked about having, it could be residential. Does that, does that increase the concern with traffic? Like, you know, if you put in 60 units, again, on that busy, busy intersection? So there, there might be some concerns, but people can still do that, right? Some developer can come in.
Yeah, a developer could come in. Both of these southwest corners are, are not only zoned, uh, residential, but also future land use planned residential. So if they wanted to do a straight, single-family detached residential subdivision, they could do that, even after this master plan is adopted. This just allows, if anybody wanted to do commercial on that, this is the way that they could do it. Kind of opens that door a little bit, but we've maintained so much control and regulation over it that they can't just build a gas station, they can't just build, you know, a warehousing or a multi-tenant storage facility, right? We have a lot of control over that.
It has to be mixed use.
Correct.
If you want to do commercial.
It has to be mixed use. And then we specifically noted, they prohibited uses in the text multiple times, you cannot have gas stations, no drive-through restaurants, things of that nature.
And I also agree with Michael that, you know, we have so much, we have this required parking lot, like so many, you know, parking lot needs to have so many things there, like the number, and that kind of has given us a lot of very big, empty parking lots.
Yeah.
So maybe if you're doing something in the future, maybe work on that in the planning.
We are, independent of this, we are looking at, once the master plan is done, one of the goals in the, the transportation corridor section is to look at our parking requirements and looking at outlot developments and things like that to, to address the expansive, underutilized parking that we do have.
Erin, just really quickly, if someone did want to put in single-family residential, would they still have to comply with the infrastructure improvements that we are putting into the master plan?
Well, the infrastructure, these are specifically noted for the nodes.
Okay.
It doesn't preclude them or doesn't stop them from having to comply with the traffic study with any, any of the other improvements. We're just calling this out because there was concern that something was going to come in without, without these elements. So while we had, had originally included these traffic improvements, bridge improvement, especially this, bridge improvements, waterways, green infrastructure, we had included that in some text, but it wasn't strong enough. So that's why we did these visual examples with the table to provide clarification and and sound, sound foundation of footing, so that way we could say, these are the elements that we want to look at, but it's also not exhaustive. So just making it clearer for people that we're not trying to develop every single property within the township within an inch of its life.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
So, so real quick, roadway improvement, it would be something that would have to be done?
Yes.
If they were to put a node in this area.
Yes, we, we noted that at, I think, every single node is to look at those, because I mean, we can look at these intersections, and we're very familiar with the traffic and whatnot at Ford and Beck, but, you know, other areas that we have identified a node at, we're not as familiar with the traffic concerns there. So those are still going to be elements or areas that will have to be studied, traffic impact studies, very, very, very meticulously studied and surveyed to make sure that it is done appropriately.
How are you determining the ra, how are you, how could you see or envision determining the ratio of commercial versus residential versus office or community shop, like, like the use there? How do you, you know, decide what's appropriate? Is it based on the specific parcel? Is it based on this kind of surrounding, I mean, what are your, how would you do, how would, how would other communities do this, or how would you envision doing this? Is it built into the, or is it built into the master plan, is my question?
That's a really good question. We didn't identify that specifically in the master plan because they are so different in terms of how big the parcels might be. You know, these here on the southeast, southwest, there's multiple parcels here. One of the conceptual designs we did at Warren and Joy, that is a 30-plus acre property. So being able to explain the ratio might be, it's, it's apples to, apples to cars. It's, it's difficult to, to compare the two. That would be something we would look at and codify in our zoning ordinance when it comes to developing this district. But we would want there to be a balance of, in, in some way, we would just have to find that, that sweet spot to find out what we want, because we don't want it to be, you know, residential, 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 oh wait, here's a tiny little, you know, 200 square foot, something or other. That, that, that's not meeting the intent of what we want to do, and nor do we want the big expansive commercial, big box, and oh, look, here's, you know, one house behind it, look, it's mixed use. We want to make sure that it meets the intent of what we want as a true, a true mix. Now, is it going to be exactly 50/50? I don't know, but looking at what the, the ratio and that balance is, that'll be something we discuss with the Planning Commission Township Board, looking at what other communities have done and, and talking to them about what their successes are and what their, if, if, if they have found any, any pitfalls that we need to be aware of.
One thing that I think some of the residents were concerned about also is that, I think in the descriptions, you have 1,000 feet on either side of the intersection, correct? And that it was going to be creating a runaway effect down the road.
Right.
So what's, I know we did get a legal opinion on that, but I'd just like to talk, if you could talk about that, because that was a concern that came across.
Yeah, so specifically with Ford and Beck, that was the only intersection or the only node location that we found or we heard that, that concern. Ford and Beck has a distinct, or Ford has a distinctive barrier separation of the commercial zoning classification, the commercial future land use classification to residential. Not only that is, there are significant wetland areas on the south side specifically, there's the, the creek, there's drains there, Monarch Grove, now Viva Bene is going to be on the, the south side, so that's going to be an active adult residential facility. So it's not going to have that expansive brushfire effect that people think there's going to be, there's, there's separation there to prevent it. And these are not designed or intended to be big box. These are intended to be small-scale, small-development, mixed-use areas. So there's not going to be a Costco here, there's not going to be a 7-Eleven or, or anything of that nature.
So they couldn't even open up, like you're saying, there's a natural barrier there. They couldn't even open it up on the other side of that natural barrier then, a commercial area?
No, because the, the future land use classification in the zoning map is very clear, demarcating that, that line, and we talked about that with the Planning Commission and the Township Board very early on in this process about extending that, that density, and it was very emphatically clear, nobody wanted to do that. So those lines are, are being held, they're kept. Not only that, there's, there's wetlands, there's, there's areas, and there's, there's limitations to what can be developed there anyway, but the, the zoning, the future land use of the commercial prevents it from spreading any further.
Thank you. Any other questions on this page before Erin goes on?
Okay. And then this was just the same table that I provided to you on example number six. So permitted uses, prohibited uses, site design, and then the elements. And this one just includes the Bridge of Prayers improvements as determined by Wayne County. So, and then there were just some, as I mentioned, there were some miscellaneous general errors that we noted. Sometimes when you look at the text or a plan or something for so long, you, you start to miss those little things. So it really provided a, a good opportunity for, for us to see those again, so some tables, things like that. So those are all going to be, those are all updated, and then the inclusion of a zoning plan, which just reflects what the future land use map is, just in a table codified form. Okay, so this is the next steps. The Planning Commission held, set their public hearing at last night's meeting, so we're going to hold the public hearing sometime in May, and then you will, we'll see you back again at step 13, when the Township Board makes the determination for adoption. So that would make, this would be our adoption timeline. Today's the 8th, you'll review detailed proposed to the Township Board, May 5th, public hearing and recommendation, and then June 10th Township Board review, and hopefully formally adopt.
Can we go back to the public transit slide?
Yep.
So these are the, like, these are the recommend, is, is the planning department doing anything about the language for the transit millage or?
Yes.
So what are we doing internally and what are we doing externally?
Yeah.
If you can clarify on that.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't put a whole lot of new language in this because it's still very new, but I did note the, the legislation that was signed by the governor and the future millage vote that's coming in 2026 and what that means for us. So Wayne County communities can no longer opt out of Smart, but independent of that and, and things that we had already talked about with the Planning Commission, the Township Board and staff, was looking at ways to, to opt into Smart or to be part of a regional network. So looking at opportunities to invest in Nankin or expand Nankin, ways that we can partner with those existing agencies. Now with this millage, vote that's coming, Canton has, we're kind of taking the, the lead on a, on initiative. So we want to look at not only how we can get our residents to and from their home, to their work, to their businesses, to the movies, to the stores, anywhere within Canton, but how does that connect to the region? How can they get to the airport? How can they get down to downtown Detroit for dinner? How could they go to Ann Arbor? So it's one thing, it's one thing to have a, a system where people can get around their community, but it's something else completely when they can connect to the network as it is. Now, Smart doesn't have the best reputation, I think we all know that, so they have some work to do, but it's about looking at and talking to our community neighbors, and where are you? What do you do? How does that work? So what we've started doing is having conversations not only with Western Wayne County Conference last week, but we're also setting up informal kickoff meeting next week, as a matter of fact, to talk to 15 of our adjacent Wayne County communities to talk about how we could conduct a regional public transit assessment. And that's looking at what are our existing conditions, who has what transit system, what works, what doesn't work, what could be expanded, how can we all tie this in? So we'll be meeting with people from planners and admin staff from Huron Township, City of Plymouth, City of Northville, I'm going to forget them, so I'm not going to name them all, but a lot of the Western Wayne County communities, so we can talk to them and find out what works. The City of Livonia has their own transit system that they operate independently, City of Detroit has their own. But how, how can the City of Livonia's and Nankin and Smart, how can they all work so that someone can get from their home in Livonia to their job in Westland to visit their mother here in Canton, right? So how can they do that without having, having to have their own personal vehicles? These are small and very big conversations that we're having. It's not all going to be done immediately, but that's the next, once this, you know, as we're wrapping up this master plan, now we're jumping into the, the transit multimodal planning efforts.
And we are on a time constraint also, because if you think about this being on the ballot in August and you back up, this really has to be done by December. So our model to give to the county and saying, this is what all these communities want.
Yep.
Yeah, so we're moving very quickly.
So we're going to have that meeting next Monday, actually, talking with those community members.
Other questions? Other questions?
That was all I had. If there are any questions?
Does our youth team have any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you, Erin. Thank you very much. Thank you. We will. Um, we'll have, um, Ms. Dowiak, I said, we'll have some questions after for Erin during the public, you can make public comment. Yeah, during public comment, sorry.
Um, if there are any, if there are any questions that you think of or any member of the public think of, you know, feel free to contact me, call me, email me, stop by the office. More than happy to talk to anybody for hours, uh, on end about the master plan.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you.
Erin, will you be here after the meeting in case people want to ask, or are you?
I actually won't, I'm sorry. I have to go pick up my son from La Crosse.
You have to pick up your son, okay. So, if you have any, if we have any questions or anyone has any questions, we'll give them your contact info.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Um, now we have the adoption of the agenda.
Madam Supervisor, I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next, we have our presentations, recognitions, former resident, of the Fire Inspector Promotion Recognition. Director Stockline, do you want to lead us in that?
I'm happy to. Do you have the, um?
Oh.
The form?
Yes, let's see. Comes up. Please come up.
We'll get Tom to come up to the front there.
Yeah, come on up. Sorry.
Time likes being in front of crowds.
We're going to make it very, very slow. Come on. Thanks. Thank, oh, you got it. Okay, thank you, Chris. Okay. Thank you. So, Thomas Agox is being recognized tonight for his recent promotion to the rank of Fire Inspector of the Canton Fire Department. Starting his career as a firefighter medic in 2007, he has steadily advanced in his field, taking on various roles and responsibilities. Since 2013, he has held the position of Union Board Secretary, working to represent his colleagues and promote their interests within the department. In 2020, he became an instructor coordinator, contributing to the training and development of the Suppression Division. His passion for helping others expanded further in 2021, when he became a CPR instructor and joined the peer support team to assist his colleagues in need. Furthermore, he has been a member of the bike team since 2022, providing specialized support during community events. In addition to the special units he has participated in, he has obtained his Fire Officer One and Two certifications, further demonstrating his commitment to leadership within the department. In his new position as a Fire Inspector, he will be tasked with overseeing a wide range of responsibilities aimed at enhancing fire safety and ensuring compliance with fire prevention laws and ordinances. A significant aspect of his duties will be involved conducting detailed inspections of commercial and industrial facilities to ensure that they adhere to established fire safety standards. As a Fire Inspector, he will be responsible for installing residential smoke alarms and conducting fire safety home inspections, all with the goal of improving fire prevention efforts. His work will not only focus on identifying potential hazards, but also on promoting best practices for fire prevention. In addition to his inspection duties, he will play a critical part in assisting with fire investigations. This aspect of his position will be essential in identifying the origin and cause of fires, helping to prevent future incidents. Through these efforts, he will contribute to minimizing fire hazards and enhancing the safety of the community. Congratulations, Fire Inspector Agox. Yay! We're going to take a picture, so you can't leave it.
Congratulations.
Come on up. Come up for the picture. Oh, you have to say something. Here you go, here you go.
One thing off there. That, that, you guys forgot to put that I'm a trophy husband. I got nothing to say. I do want to say thanks to, these, these guys are my shift.
Oh.
Nice.
Greg, thanks, Greg. Here, I've got it. Ready? Oh. There you go, there you go. Can you see us all, Greg? Is there anyone in the fire station? Thanks, Greg. Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you. All right, thanks. Next, we have board and commission reports from the Youth Advisory Council. Would you like to come to the podium, please? Oh, I'm sorry, you can do it from there. Yes. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, my name is Neha.
And my name is Rohan.
So, regarding the 2025 Yak Grant, we reviewed two applications on Monday, April seventh. We awarded five hundred dollars to the PSEP Asian-
Is it not working? Would you want to?
You have to hold it down.
Oh, is it the one you have to hold down? Okay.
Okay, um, we awarded- Um, we awarded five hundred dollars to the PSEP Asian Pacific American Club for the Michigan Pan Asian American Conference, and then four hundred fifty dollars awarded to the Wings of Wisdom Foundation for the Storyseekers Book Club. We really liked both applications and we funded the Wings of Wisdom Foundation fully and APAC partially for their supplies.
We've also initiated the Chipotle fundraiser, which the funds will go to Yak's endowment in a future to increase grants. And, uh, we also have flyers.
Great. Do you have anything else?
And then for the Canton Township Sports Programming Survey, we are still accepting submissions, um, and we do have the flyer here as well to distribute.
Yak's, the Yak April Newsletter will be published on Monday, April fourteenth.
Very good. Anything else? Okay. Any other board or commission reports? Summer?
I can talk briefly about the Planning Commission meeting that we had last night. Um, we did, um, approve the master plan to, um, um, to set the public hearing for the master plan. Um, we also, um, set a public hearing for the tree and woodland preservation ordinance, and set a public hearing for the sign ordinance, um, and also approved some site plans for the Canton Township Administration Building, um, and the Village Arts Factory Parking Lot.
Good. All right. Anyone else? So, I know the Sustainability Committee is, just to let everyone know, they're working with, um, Chamber and we're going, they're creating kind of a metrics for different businesses to determine how sustainable they are. We're going to have like a little contest and talk about residents and businesses that are sustainable, and they'll get a little sticker in their window saying, this is a sustainable business, and points, kind of like the Michigan Green Communities. Another committee, the Technology Committee, is having an appathon in May, so they're still looking for people that want to participate in that. It's to help nonprofits with, um, some of their applications and things like that. The others? Tanya?
Um, so, uh, the Canton Commission for Culture, Arts and Heritage is doing, has come up with a Canton Borders Shirt, which basically is a shirt designed by one of the cultural commissioners, and it basically has, um, um, the four borders of Canton in it and, uh, the names of it. And, uh, we are having, uh, it's now available on a website, and we are raising funds. You can buy the shirt, it says Joy, Napier, Hanan, Van Born. And, um, so you, I can forward you the link where you can go and buy the, buy the shirt, and it helps with the fundraiser and also, basically, you can say that you are from Canton, Michigan.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to do public comment on agenda items only. We have something here. We're trying today. It will let everybody know how much time they have left if they'd like to speak. So, this is public comment on agenda items only. So, please go up to the podium if you have a public comment. Let's see if this thing works. Okay. First one, ready?
I love it. I'm, I'm the guy that break in the clock. Let's go. Okay.
There you go.
Ready, roll. Here we go. Okay. Item Consent Calendar Two, uh, yeah, full support, license plates readers. Actually, if we could expand upon that, shown that it, uh, really helps. Uh-oh, I got more time. Keep going.
The time is, the time is-
Keep going.
Keep going.
Hey, um, Consent Calendar Three. Uh, I think it's a good time to, to make a few comments. As you can see here in Canton Township, uh, what's been assembled here is a, is a really good group of people. Uh, as you've just seen with the, with the Fire Department, you know, who would come in and show that kind of support for a, a guy who's getting promoted to be an inspector? And that just shows the camaraderie that, that's here, the, the, the energy that's here. So, when you look at, you know, um, contract with McKenna, yeah, I could see that working. But what I could also see working is like, senior guys that work here, Pat Falzon, Eric Bowers, Steve Munson, who, you know, replaced Bill Moy, Ken Deletsky, all those guys that were really good inspectors. They were, they're experts in their trade. You know, they were, they were craftsmen in their trade and they became inspectors. I've had the, the honor to work with those guys, and they're great guys. They, they, they know how to talk to the community, they know how to talk to a contractor. They have a lot of high level of respect. So, it'd be awful hard to just have a company come in and say, hey, we're going to inspect. But it would be pretty good if you could foster new talent by the old talent, you know, mentoring them. Well, before their days are up, you know, maybe retirement or, you know, doing something different. Um, I just think that would be a, a good thing. I'd like to say to Dave, you know, I think Dave has brought so much class and sophistication to the MSD Department since Dave. Dave is a customer service guy. He's a, he's a always-available guy to the community. He is, uh, you know, he comes, he comes, you know, I got to know Dave really well. He's, he's a really, I tell him, I think he's the best guy we've had in twenty-five years here, because he's always open, he's always available. And you can see, that's that energy. All those, all those guys over there keep saying that over and over again. Those are big shoes to fill. Big shoes to fill. The question is, how do you fill them? And, I'm sure with that knowledge we'll get there. But, glad to have you, all of you. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Agenda items only? Let me look online. I don't know if, um, let me see. Oh, attendee zero. Okay, nope. All right, thank you. Our next public comment will be at the end. Um, can I have a motion to approve the minutes for March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five?
So, moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, can I have a motion to pay the bills?
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills. Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Foster. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Right, now we have the consent calendar.
Supervisor, I move to adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider request to increase blanket purchase order for PSD IT Systems Technical Support. C2, consider renewing the license plate reader investigative data platform annual subscription. C3, consider approval of a contract with McKenna Associates for supplementary building and trade inspection and plan review services for the Building and Inspection Services Division of Municipal Services. C4, consider award of a purchase order contract to OHM Advisors for completion of an update to Canton's Risk and Resilience Assessment and Emergency Response Plan to the EPA. C5, consider second reading and adoption of an amendment to Appendix A, zoning the Code of Ordinances for Muslim Educational Community Center of America, or MECA, rezoning. And then item C6, consider approving an increase to the blanket purchase order issued to Kent Communications Incorporated. I know you guys use KCI.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next one is to consider award of contract to Bidagir Contractors for the 2025 Water Main Capital Improvement Project.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the award of a 2025 Water Main Capital Improvement Project, CIP, construction to Bidagir Contractors Incorporated, and issue a purchase order in the amount of two million four hundred seventy-five thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars. Uh, award the continuation of the contract with Bidagir Contractors Incorporated for tw- twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven construction years, and approve the required budget amendment to cover costs of construction and the future construction and engineering request.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The 2018 Water Master Plan identified several projects necessary to meet the existing and future water demands of our customers. In addition to the master plan, staff is constantly evaluating locations that are experiencing multiple main breaks in a relatively small area. Engineering Services is recommending the award of contract to Bidagir Contractors Incorporated for the 2025 Water Main Capital Improvement Project Construction. Engineering Services requests a purchase order in the amount of two million four hundred seventy-five thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything to add. Uh, we're just ready to get going this year on our water main projects.
Any questions from the board? U.S. No. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G2, consider award of construction engineering for Heritage Park and Maintenance Facility.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order in the amount of forty-six thousand five hundred dollars to Wade Trim to perform construction engineering of the Heritage Park paving and maintenance yard updates.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Ganguly. Heritage Park Maintenance Yard consists of multiple amenities and facilities. Over the last few years, Engineering Services and Leisure Services have been working together to replace the failing pavement and update other infrastructure. Engineering Services is requesting a purchase order to Wade Trim for construction engineering work associated with the necessary improvements to Heritage Park Parking Lot, Walking Pass and Leisure Services Maintenance Yard in the amount of forty-six thousand five hundred dollars. Director, let me see who this is one. Director Norwood, do you have anything on this one?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything to add, but happy to answer any questions.
Our Yak team? Anybody on the board? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Nope, it didn't work. That one didn't work. Okay. B3, consider approving the renewal of a contract with Nagel Paving Company for 2025 Local Road Improvement Program.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the renewal of a contract and issuance of a purchase order for the 2025 Local Road Improvements Program Asphalt to Nagel Paving Company for a total award of five hundred seventy-four thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Twenty eighteen, a one-point-four-five mil road funding millage is approved by the voters for roadwork, including repairs to local subdivision roads. This award is for the 2025 construction year. The contract will be valid and run through the twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six construction years, with a possible yearly extension for the twenty-seven and twenty-eight construction years, all of which may include pay item and price adjustments. Engineering Services is requesting approval of the renewal of a contract and issuance of a purchase order with Nagel Paving Company in the amount of five hundred seventy-four thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents for the 2025 Local Road Improvement Program Asphalt. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. This is for the asphalt part of the projects. Uh, you'll be seeing concrete and ASR, and next meeting is the plan. And next meeting is the plan. So more work to be done out of the roads millage and leveraging the roads millage for more dollars that we got from the state and from Wayne County.
Okay, thank you. The Yak team? No, anyone on the board? Tanya?
So is this for like smaller roads, like subdivision roads?
Correct, yes. This is neighborhood work.
Are we doing any major, bigger roads?
We are doing major roads. You'll see that for Beck Road and for Geddes Road. Beck from Cherry Hill and Michigan Avenue and Beck, Geddes from Canton Center to Beck Road.
Michael?
Yeah, I just want to say how proud I am. There was a recent article in, I think, was it the Detroit News or was it M-Live? That talked about, you know, we all know how bad Michigan roads are, but it, but it really focused around, around Canton Township and how proactive we have been with regards to our local roads program. And it was really cool, really cool to see. A lot of the cities and a lot of the counties refer to townships as freeloaders because in order to get Act 51 money, you are required to have a local roads millage and you are required to put money in, local tax dollars in for, for roads. And townships don't receive Act 51 money. Townships put zero dollars in typically for roads. And Canton Township decided in 2018 at the ballot box to change that. And it is interesting. Even coming out of the, the recent freeze thaw, it's interesting to see how much different the conversation is around roads in Canton Township than it was eight to nine years ago when I first took office, which, and, and, and we see in the Pacer rating, not just the kind of objective, subjective, or subjective kind of view that the roads are better. We can quantifiably see the improvement to the roads. So I'm really excited to get this season of construction underway. And looking forward to it. And there's a lot of asphalt, so I'm definitely excited about that as well.
Anyone else?
David Norwood.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G4, consider approval of a budget amendment and purchase order increase for the additional professional engineering services for the Town Square at Cherry Hill Sewer Extension.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order increase to OHM Advisors for the Cherry Hill Village Town Square Phase One Engineering Services by $14,800 and the related budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Ganguly. In April 24, the Board of Trustees approved an RBA to award engineering services for the Cherry Hill Village Town Square Phase One to OHM Advisors. This part of the project design focused on activating the space surrounding Cherry Hill School. Since then, the project has taken shape and was bid out in anticipation of impending construction. During the same time, the township has engaged in discussions with investors who wish to develop the property to the north, often referred to as a triangle property. Through those discussions, the township and the developer agreed that it would be mutually beneficial to include the design and construction of a sewer extension that would reach the edge of the triangle property to prevent the need to tear up newly constructed park space later. The project management team is requesting the board to consider approval of a purchase order increase for additional professional engineering services of OHM Advisors for the design of the sanitary sewer line extension. Not to exceed $14,800. The developer has signed an agreement to fully reimburse the township for all related expenses. A budget amendment is necessary. Director LeFever, do you want to add anything?
Nothing further to add, but happy to take any questions.
Yak team? Anyone on the board? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Next item, G5, consider request waive the bidding process and approve the purchase of four Dell CAD computers and four Dell Patrol laptops.
Madam Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process. Purchase four Dell Pro Rugged laptops, MDCs, and four Dell OptiPlax Tower Plus CAD computers from Dell Technologies in the amount of $12,410.60 utilizing reprogrammed funds in the E911 Capital Computers Account.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Ganguly. To maintain compatibility with our Clemis, Clemis computer system, all the MDCs, mobile data computers, and CAD dispatch computers are required to be running Windows 11 operating system by the fall of '25. These eight Clemis computer laptops are the last remaining machines running on the Windows 10 in the police department. The department is requesting to waive the bidding process and purchase four Dell Pro Rugged Patrol Vehicle laptops and four Dell OptiPlax Tower Plus CAD computers to be equipped with all Clemis dispatch investigations and records management software. Dell brand is required for compatibility with Oakland County Clemis product. On behalf of Clemis, Dell Technologies has quoted a combined total for the laptops and desktops at $12,410.60 utilizing the state of Michigan MI Deals Agreement. Director Bowe, do you want to add anything?
I have nothing further. Couldn't say it better.
Any questions? How about from the board? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Next item, consider approval to accept the Michigan Economic Development Corporation Grant.
Madam Supervisor, I move to accept the Michigan Economic Development Corporation Grant in the amount of $2.5 million to be used to renovate the Summit on the Park Community Center and the related budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. In the fall of '24, State Rep Ranji Puri secured a $2.5 million grant from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation to use towards the renovation of the Summit on the Park with a focus on Club 55 Plus relocation and expansion. Canton Leisure Services is recommending to accept the MEDC grant in the amount of $2.5 million. A budget amendment is necessary. Let me see. So I just want to read this a little bit more. Okay, so Canton Senior Program, and it's, this is to make additional facility enhancements. Currently, Club 55 Plus operates in approximately 1,500 square feet. The expanded activity space and improvements will give seniors and other members of the community a place to enjoy billiards, shuffleboards, additional exercise classes, card games, cooking classes, and expanded services and amenities. Director Hohenberger, do you want to add anything?
Wrong button. All right. No, just happy to answer any questions.
Yak team?
Yeah, we have a few questions. So first, how many people visit the Club 55 Plus area at the summit currently? Is it an active area with a high usage?
Yes, very active. Last year, we had about 35,000 visits just to the senior center portion of the summit last year.
Our second question is if the renovations will affect the activities in other areas of the summit? And if so, how long will the renovations take?
It depends on the final design, which we have not finalized yet. But it will likely have some impact where we have to move some activities around, especially down in the banquet center for a few months while the renovations take place. But we haven't determined the full scope. Next step in the process will be to put out RFPs for an architect and designer for the, the final scope of this and working with the users of the area to, to finalize that design.
Board questions? Michael?
Does it have to be a question?
No.
Okay, good. Just checking.
Short comments.
Short comments? Wow. You clearly haven't been sitting next to me for four years.
I'm putting the timer on.
Three minutes. That would be wise. I just think it's really important to acknowledge the significance of this MEDC grant of $2.5 million. The board had already set aside money out of fund balance to do a lot of this, this improvements. And I think that it's, it's fantastic. Not only that we intentionally worked with the legislature to, to get back our tax dollars out of the state budget process. We worked with our legislative partner, Ranji Puri, in doing that and would not have happened without his, his work in that. This is a direct benefit to the residents of Canton Township and is not to be understated.
Tanya?
Yeah, I, I am very excited for this project because I have been asking if we can make some renovations for the overcrowding of the summit. And I think we are investing in the, you know, the senior facility, but I think we have an opportunity to kind of realign. And I had some initial conversations with our deputy directors on the line. And he was showing me what they're thinking about. And I'm very excited to see what we are planning because, you know, summit is one of the buildings in our township that's used by a lot of people. And we have swim classes. We have so many different classes. It's always very crowded. And it'll be a good project and that'll benefit a lot of people in this community.
I'll just make a quick comment, ditto, on what my colleagues have said. And I do appreciate the representative for all the hard work he did to bring dollars back to us. And it will help. I know our senior Club 55 really, you know, needs a upgrade in the area that they will get. And hopefully, they'll be able to have room closer to parking so that they can get to their activities a little easier. So I'm looking forward to the renovations as well.
Yes, I walk through the summit at various times. In the morning, it's packed with Club 55. I mean, they're playing cards, they're doing knitting. They're doing Meals on Wheels. They have little, different card schemes in different rooms. So they're even playing different variations. So it's very, and then if you go there on a Saturday, you can't get in the pool. But in the evenings, the machines are full, so it's a very full facility. So this is going to be exciting, getting these renovations. All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. All right, so now we have additional public comments for three minutes. I'm going to turn this on because there's a delay, just to let you know. Just to let you know, that's why it's kind of delayed before it starts. But anybody want to come to the podium and speak, ask questions, make comments?
Hello, everyone. Hi. Hello, Stephanie Richards. I am your Western Wayne Community Liaison for representing the Wayne County Sheriff's Office. I'm just popping by to say hello. I'm in your area a lot. I'm in all the little areas in, in Western Wayne, cities and townships. But just kind of wanted to let you know what I've been up to. Aside from coming to the different political meetings and the different city council meetings and things like that, I've just been randomly popping up in, in events, in like community events. And I'm trying to see what's going on, what are people doing. I went to a book club meeting and it was one of the best, that was in Belleville, I think. It was one of the best experiences that I've had. It was hilarious just to, to go in and listen to all the banter back and forth. I've actually went on you guys' website. So speaking of the senior center, I wanted to see what exactly is going on so I can see what I can pop in on and, and get involved with. I decided to go in on a off night because the seniors are going to run me around how my, my knees are set up. I don't want to slow down the seniors. So I'm going to definitely wait until a night, you know, where I can pop in and see how I can participate and that sort of thing. Because to me, a community representative really needs to be in the community. So that's what I do. So I just wanted to let you know, of course, I'm here to, to offer any assistance that you may need. If you have any needs that you want the sheriff to participate in, of course, we extend that always. But I just want to come by and say hi when I'm in your area and let you know what I'm doing in your area.
Very good. I know. Thank you for coming. Since you're from Wayne County, does anyone have any questions? I know from our, our team. So you're representing the Sheriff's Department, correct?
Yes.
So no, the seniors start pool that starts about 7:00 AM in the morning. So they're there all day.
All right, maybe I'll pop in and swim with a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, thank you. Anyone else next?
Hi, Tim McCausen again. 328 Hagerty Road. I think what we talked about here a month or so ago came to fruition here last week. You know, we talked about flooding and we talked about regional water. And talked about how these communities to the north of us, when we talked about that potential overflow drainage system that could come along with the, the negation of the sewer treatment plant. Well, a lot of those communities to the north of us, Plymouth Plymouth Township, don't believe it's their problem, stormwater. They think it's Canton Township problem. But I think they were a little bit surprised when the city of Plymouth lost some businesses here in a rainstorm we had here a week or so ago. And it put some long-term, small businesses out of, out of business through flooding. It was like an epic flood for the city of Plymouth. So it became their problem, right? They, they only say it's, it's, you know, it doesn't affect you till it basically affects you. Man, I love that clock. It doesn't move off three. I love it. It must like me. That clock really does like me. Oh, there it went, 2:58. That clock, I, I want that clock to stay. Don't ever get rid of it. I love it. Yeah, we want that clock. So, you know, their problem all of a sudden became a problem. So I think it would be a great opportunity to get those people to the table and say, look, you're experiencing what we're experiencing down here, you know, your experience. It's not, it's not when, you know, if the next rain's coming, it's when. And people here are living with this, you know, this anxiety of when this rain's going to come and what's going to happen. And if we can negate this, I, I just think it's time that, I mean, I saw you, you know, credits to your supervisor. You had a great town, speak to the, you know, state of the township. And I looked around and I saw all those people in that room. And I thought, thought to myself, if you could only get those same political figures in that room and talk about this regional water, we could finally move somewhere on this. And I think you have the ability to do it. And I just think it's time. It really is time. It's time to, you know, we know the, we know the potential loss and we know the potential damage and we know the potential harm. So it's just time that we say, you know, state, county, federal, we all got to get in a room and we got to get this under control. Because that even wasn't a very epic rain we had. But it, you know, combined with the frozen ground and the runoff we had, there was a lot of flooding. And it's a regional problem. It's not a local problem. And I, I hope they really wake up and say, hey, this is a regional problem and we all have to look at this together. But sooner than later, before the next tragedy strikes. Thanks.
Thank you. Next?
George Miller. First of all, I'd like to know if we could have more than one electric car plug in. For example, if your employee here have electric car, you come from Lansing, snowstorm, you get here, you can't plug it in. Can't plug it in all day. When you go home, you're in a bind to get back to Lansing. Okay, that's a drift of flooding issue. Went down, we have a road issue here that we pay for roads. Geddes Road was mentioned tonight. From Bar Road I went down the other day, all the way to Beck, it was flooded. All those five acre parcels, two and seven acre parcels especially was flooded. We had the road giveaway over by the high school on Joy Road in Canton Center. It would be good if Wayne County would clean the ditches. This township took on that responsibility 20 or 30 years ago. Now, the next thing is, let's get to the tree program. Nice job planting trees underneath the line. Mr. Edison puts out a fire, word for word. Trees are beautiful, no doubt about it, in Michigan landscape. They also are a leading cause of power outages and can pose a serious safety hazard. So you would maybe do better if you put tulips underneath the power lines. Make it green. So the ditch over on Shelton and Palmer Road, the guardrail, we've been complaining for the last 10 years on it. It's in the ditch there, the guardrail. In that area, you had a flood over there, a water main break. I'd like to know why it takes three and four and six hours to shut off the water. And you have a fun for it and whatever. six hours to shut off the water. And you have a fund for it and evidently we're paying for some of it no matter what. That shut it off. Same way on Ford Road. When I bought land out here, you can almost bet the engineers, county engineers and township engineers went over there and they said, guess what? Water mains running down Michigan, Cherry Hill, Ford Road, and that's the water department of Detroit takes care, supposed to take care of that. So I'd like to know what can be done to improve the shut off on the water so we're not responsible for it and cleaning some of the ditches that we've been doing. One final thing, I want to know what the Corps of Engineers is doing on this flooding. It's been a year and we haven't heard a word from them, in any meeting or from you guys at all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Michael Schultz, um, real quick, I live on Sheldon Road, actually Deion Street. And when the water comes through, it floods. Sheldon Road is terrible. When they get that roundabout done and those bridges, which are in very bad shape, need to be addressed, um, I'm glad it'll be, hopefully it'll be fixed. But the other part is, is last meeting they were talking about, they had these people in here that they have a tough time with these sidewalks. And Michael Seeger was saying he had to pay. Well, you know what? He's making six figures plus. That's a whole lot different than somebody that's making $20,000 or $10,000. You know, it's a lot easy, a whole lot easier to pay for it when you're making a lot of money. And I was hoping maybe that money we pay when we pay our taxes, that pork fund, we could take some money out of that pork fund and help these people out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? I know you, Mr. Doyak? I know you wanted to ask a question before. Did you want to ask a question now? Oh, okay. No, 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 that's okay. Okay. Anyone else in the room? Okay, okay. All right. Okay, next, we have administrative comments. Want to talk about anything that's happening in your departments out there? Or, um, we'll start with Michelle. Anything?
We're looking forward to rolling out our limited English proficiency and expanding that, um, starting next week. So looking forward to doing that for our residents and having more access to, uh, the services here in the township.
Thank you. Greg?
Spring is upon us and all of our outdoor activities are getting busier. All of our playgrounds are opening this week. Bathrooms in the parks should be opening this week. Mulch is being added to the, the playgrounds. So we're in full swing for the spring and summer season. Sports Center opens this weekend as well for our, uh, games and tournaments out there.
Very good. Thank you. Chief Chad?
Thank you. Uh, just want to let everyone know that's watching or is here today that April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I just want to thank the board and Deputy Supervisor Joe Oliver for, uh, having the foresight to help us bring Kids Talk here because for us here, it's just not a month that's, we're actually taking action so these childrens, um, can have a safe place for, uh, to offer their story and receive some type of trauma therapy and use that information as we try to prosecute the perpetrators.
Thank you. Director LaFever?
Our projects continue to be in full swing. So if anybody's out in the Cherry Hill Village area, you'll see our nice new pavilion, uh, going up. So I encourage you to stop by, drive by there and check it out. It's in, uh, full view now, which is great to see. Also, this Sunday is our final winter farmer's market. So we encourage everyone to check that out Sunday morning from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And then before you know it, we'll be outside every Sunday, uh, come mid-May. So spring is upon us. So we're excited to get our, all of our outdoor events going as well.
Thank you. Director Stockline?
Well, Clerk Seeger swore in for firefighters yesterday and HR has been doing a wonderful job of getting them hired in. And I believe we'll be at full staff here after the, um, the next group that we get hired. So we've been doing a lot of work. HR's been doing a lot of work and now we have a lot of training ahead of us. So things are looking good for the fire department.
All right, thank you. Director Norwood?
Just a note about yard waste has started. Um, I know it's been cold, so I don't know if folks have been cleaning up their yards, but you can put it to Kirk.
All right, thank you. Deputy Supervisor? No? The act team? Tanya?
Um, so, uh, we have a few events that are happening this month in, at the Village Arts Factory. Uh, we have the Festival of Colors Celebration this Friday from 5:00 to 7:00. We'll have food trucks. We'll have some kids' activities, some colors. And we also have art, Art in Bloom coming up in a couple of weeks. So please visit and enjoy.
Summer?
Just like to note that April is Arab American Heritage Month. Um, and as Director Hohenberger said, um, it is technically spring and I hope the weather catches up soon.
Thanks, Michael.
Um, just, um, going to be, I don't know, Earth Day's coming up, April 22nd. And I think there's going to be an intention to do a tree planting before that board meeting. That would be pretty awesome and exciting. And, um, yeah, Canton Nature Society is looking forward to participating and helping with that as well. Um, so just, you know, looking forward to that.
Very good. Thank you. Diane?
Yeah, I was going to say, uh, spring supposedly was here, is here. And, um, I was going to say that, um, April 22nd is Earth Day. Michael, through my thunder, but, um, that's fine. And I'm planning on planting a tree. I hope everybody else is on Earth Day. So hopefully, Earth Day will be a warmer day.
Thanks. Uh, Dave, Director Norwood, do you want to talk a little bit about the flooding that happened that was spoken about on Geddes and Bar and then also the US Army Corps of Engineers? Give a little bit of a...
Sure. I can give an update. The, the Army Corps, our status with them is we've given the data to them, the surveys that we had done on Fowler Creek and on Fellows Creek. So they're working on the model that they're going to create for us and the data that we can, we can act upon when they, when they put this into the model. Um, this latest flooding incident was very similar to the January 2024 flooding, uh, where things, things were coming over across the field that's west of Bar and south of Geddes there. So we will be in contact with Wayne County. And also, we're going to do some reconnaissance on Fowler Creek, see when you go east of Denton, uh, what's happening there because that seemed to be where, where the concentration of flooding was happening. Because there were some weird things that we saw on Denton Road, uh, some, some of our investigation that things were not, as you go north on Denton, north of Fowler, Fowler Creek and get closer to, to the Little Rouge, there wasn't even flooding at all there. So we're trying to figure out what's, uh, what happened there. Um, we're also going to be having a neighborhood know-how about the pond maintenance. That's, we want to make sure that, uh, in the, in the HOAs that the ponds are being, uh, maintained to their design, that they're functioning correctly. So more to come on that, uh, in the next month or so, uh, with the, the different HOAs and residents so they can understand where, how that could impact flooding too.
And I think that they, the timing is, US Army Corps of Engineers, I think their study's supposed to be done in October, I believe.
Yeah, their normal timeframe is 18 to 24 months, but because of things that are happening at the federal government, I think we actually got moved up. Um, so we're about nine months into it now. Um, it took some time to get it set up, uh, because of the, the way the, the way they work with their agreement. So, um, look forward to what they come up with.
Thank you. Also, in terms of electric vehicle chargers, IKEA is putting in four Level 3s, I believe, and supposed to be doing it this month. And then our, we will be placing one in Fellows Creek. These are all public. Um, and then, let me see, in terms of trees, I believe it was posted, but any trees under power lines will be 10 feet tall. They'll be shorter trees. So they won't reach the power line height. They will...
Yeah, correct. The, the species that we're planting are, they will not get into the power lines based upon their, uh, growth, their growth pattern.
Thank you. Okay, great. Anything else? Anyone? All right. Um, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We're adjourned. Motion, motion passes. Have a good night.